Let me do a little housekeeping. Our next meeting is March 9. But then we're taking April off and we'll finish in May. The overall theme is behold, I make all things new. The way I have imagined this is we're looking at biblical passages which represent turning points in the story of God in the Bible. As God is revealed in new aspects throughout the story chronicled by ancient Israel. And tonight, we're going to look primarily at a text from the book of Proverbs. Proverbs, chapter eight, but we'll look at some other texts too, depending on time. Because this is one of my favorite themes in the Old Testament. And it is the theme of wisdom with a capital W. The Hebrew word for wisdom is hokma, hokma. The Greek word for this wisdom, for this hokma, is sophia, sophia. And this is a unappreciated theme in the Bible that there is, we might say, a name for God that is wisdom. I think of wisdom as a secret hidden in the Bible. And wisdom represents a feminine personification for God. For that part of God that unifies and beautifies all things, that unifies and beautifies all things. So without further ado, that's my intro. Without further ado, let's look at Proverbs and see if you can, if I can show it. Are you there? Oh, look at here, February 13th, but it's not a Friday, so we're cool.
We can see, we can see it, thank you.
Asylum Hills. By the way, what's the story about the, the name of? It's the avenue, right? And its name, wh-what's the asylum? Tell me the story, you Hartfordians.
I think the church started, a group of women started a school for children. And asylum, I think, I think it, oh, there, it already may have been called, I can't remember what the, where they were.
It was the school for the death.
It was the.
Remember that, remember that statue of the little girl at the, where asylum and Farmington.
That's great.
Separate the asylum was an asylum school for the death and that eventually moved to West Hartford, to North Main Street. But that's where the asylum name came from, per asylum.
Okay. Well, you see, you hear our, see the title, A New Aspect of God, The Emergence of Lady Wisdom in Proverbs 8. Let's see, what do I have here? Wisdom's debut. Proverbs 8, now I'm sounding like an Old Testament professor, with a Proverbs 8 should be dated to the sixth or fifth century B.C. I say that because it means Proverbs 8 is written after Genesis 1. You know, Genesis 1 tells the story of creation. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. And the earth was without form and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep. And the spirit of God was hovering on the waters, over the waters, and then God said, "Let there be light," and there was light. And God saw that the light was good, and he called the light day, and the darkness he called night. And there was evening, and there was morning, day one, and so forth. You know Genesis 1. Proverbs 8 is a later text than Genesis 1, and you might say it's a commentary or a friendly amendment to Genesis 1. Because it retells the story of creation. Only in this case, in Proverbs, God has a partner in creation. Her name is hokma, which means wisdom. So now let's, I, I hope this is shocks you a little bit, or surprises you, or something. So here we go, Proverbs 8. It begins, this is verse 1, "It is wisdom calling..." Understanding, that's a synonym for wisdom, understanding, understanding raising her voice. And then after a few verses of introduction, we hear her speech. So just imagine there is a presence with a capital P called wisdom, and it's giving a speech. It's some kind of divine spirit or force. Wisdom says, "Unto you, O men, I call, and my voice is for all the sons of Adam." Is everybody with me? All right, now, it goes on and on, but here's the good part. Verse 22, "The Lord generated me at the beginning of his ways." At the beginning, in the beginning, it's the same language as Genesis 1. "In the olden times of his works before..." This material is poetic, and that's why I've translated it this way. It's, it's elusive and beautiful. "From forever ago, I was put in place at the beginning of the olden times of earth." So this figure, wisdom says, "I was there in the beginning." "When there were no deeps, I was set in motion." And that word deep is a word from Genesis 1. It says, "And there was darkness on the face of the deep." And it says, "Even before there were deeps, I was set in motion." As if we should imagine that wisdom joins God. Well, if, if, when it says, "The Lord generated me," but it was before there were deeps, so we have to squeeze wisdom in between verse 1 and verse 2 of Genesis. Which is an incredible thing. It's as if this writer is taking Genesis 1 and adding footnotes. That says, "In between, in the beginning, and in between the spirit hovering, God generated wisdom." "When there were no deeps," verse 24, "I was set in motion, when there were no springs, the sources of water, prior to when mountains were sunk." "Air hills, I was set in motion," again, the, the poetry of it. "Air hills, I was set in motion." "When he had not made earth and horizons, or the first clumps of clay. When sky was set in place, there I was. When he lined out a circle above the deep, when he girded above the upper sky, when he overpowered the springs of the deep, when he established for the sea its lines, so that the waters not transgress his command, when he lined out the foundations of the earth," all this lining out, it, it's the language of a surveyor of an architect, of a builder. Yes, verse 30, "I was beside him crafting, and I was delighting daily, rejoicing before him at every instant, rejoicing at the continents of the earth, and delighting in the stuns of Adam." Okay. Don't look for a second, let's, let's just think. I'm gonna stop the share. So you're not tempted. You, you, you might say that Proverbs 8 is the world's first biblical commentary on Genesis, only it's in the Bible. It's a part of the Bible commenting on another part of the Bible. So let's again go back to Genesis 1 and think about it. You know, there's day one, I, I was pretty proud of myself for quoting all of verses 1 and 2 and 3. But I, you don't expect me to go now and then on day 2, and then the Lord said, I can't, I can't go from there. But if you remember the pattern, for six days, God makes a series of creations. At the end of every day of, of description, it'll say, "And it was evening, and it was morning, day 1, day 2, day 3, day 4." And then prior to that, it will say, "And the Lord saw that it was good, and the Lord saw that it was good." And then at the very end, or near the end, it says, "And then the Lord God made Adam," it says, "in his image. In the image of God, he made him, male and female, he made them." Remember that? Male and female, he made them. So there's a lot of things about Genesis 1 that are puzzlers. One thing is when it's, when God says, "Let us make man." Well, who are the us? Because before, it just said, "And God made heavens and the earth." And so, inquiring minds, even in biblical times, we're thinking, wait a second. God says us, and yet, it's only, the only description is of a single God. And then another thing, it says, "And he made humanity in the image of God, male and female." And we hadn't had, and, and you know, the word for God in Hebrew is masculine, we hadn't heard of a feminine presence before in Genesis 1. And so, the writer of Proverbs says, well, let me fill out the picture. That God generated, I guess we could say created, but he doesn't use the word for create in Proverbs. Generated another being named wisdom right before day 1. Wisdom is a feminine presence. And then it says in, in Proverbs 8, that wisdom daily delighted. Well, you can imagine then, at that part of the, of Genesis 1 where it says, "And God saw that it was good." The, the writer of Proverbs is suggesting that then wisdom is there to cheer and celebrate and say, "Yeah, great." Daily delighting, daily, day 1, day 2, day 3, day 4. And then at the end of the passage, when it says, "Let us make them in our image, our image, male and female." The, the writer of Proverbs says, you know, it makes perfect sense if there is also a feminine part of God. And so Genesis doesn't say this. But Proverbs, which was written later, says, "The story of Genesis should also include another part of God that's feminine, and we will call it hokma, which translates as wisdom." So it's actually a brand new, and I think revolutionary kind of turn in the history of biblical religion to introduce a feminine side of God. Now, I said in one of my early remarks, this is a secret hidden in the Bible. Because until the last 50 years or so, when feminist theologians began to explore this neglected theme in the Bible, no one ever took wisdom seriously with a capital W in these passages. And of course, you see, the problem is Hebrew doesn't have capital letters or small letters, it just has all these big block consonants. But it, what's, what's happened to me is I've become bewitched by this image of a hidden feminine side of God that appears throughout the Old Testament, well, not throughout, in about a half dozen places. And yeah, that, that, that's the thing. It, 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 it's a haunting, interesting development. I guess we could say that the, the, the problem for our theology is that when they had those church councils and they came up with the Trinity, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, they didn't invite hokma. Although it's also possible that even if they'd invited her, she wouldn't have come. Because thi- this, in, in a way, it's a beautiful kind of symbol for a part of God, an aspect of God that is feminine, and also can't be pinned down. So let's look at some more texts, okay, just so you can see some other places where hokma shows up. Oh, listen to this sense, "Whether this wisdom should be considered a being independent from the Lord or as a feminine aspect of God's self is not clear. But what does seem clear is that in Proverbs, that wisdom is present in the creation of the world." Here's some other appearances of wisdom. In Psalm 104, it says, "How manifold are your creative works, O Lord, all of them created by wisdom." Hokma. There's a whole poem about wisdom in Job 28. And so we're gonna look at it. Before we do, I'm gonna just pause. See anybody have any questions so far? Because I can't tell if I, 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 well, I just can't read your responses. I don't know if this is a little too wacky or unclear, or, but before we shift gears and read a new text, let's just see if we got any questions or comments so far. All right, Jane, you've gotta work some.
I'm gonna. I will ask a question. It seems as if in some places, wisdom is alongside of God while God is creating. And in others, this one, wisdom is a co-creator?
Yeah. And you know, the, the Bible is never systematic. And most, even though we like our theology to be systematic. And all these texts are most like Psalms, and Proverbs are both in poetry. So even the very mode of communicating is loose and fluid. So yeah, go figure. In some places, it's as if wisdom is there, God's assistant, you might say, God's partner, and then in this case, wisdom is given more of a role.
Greg?
Yes.
When we're talking about wisdom like this, and we're talking about Proverbs, who or which group of people wrote Proverbs? Because my first impulse is to, huh, this doesn't appear anywhere else in the Bible. Who, who's coming with this viewpoint? Why do we have this viewpoint inserted in Proverbs? And it certainly didn't make it to Genesis. So I guess I'm questioning who created or wrote about wisdom to begin with in Proverbs?
Right.
May I comment?
Yes.
Some of us may have heard of this, as Sophia.
Exactly.
I mean, I think we actually studied this.
Well, good for you.
Who wrote Proverbs?
So.
The feminine side of God is Sophia, and, and I know we studied that at in church.
So Corinne, I can't tell you who wrote Proverbs, but I can tell you because many of the parts of the book of Proverbs, you might say, weren't even really written. They were the oral proverbs of Israelites that were collected. It's like saying, who came up with the saying, you know, a stitch in time saves nine? There's no, no telling. So much of the book of Proverbs represents an ancient collection of sayings of Proverbs. But then, excuse me, there's this section which is not, it's just like an essay, a poetic essay. And I can't tell you who wrote it, but I can tell you it was written after Genesis. Because it was written, you know, you can, in a way, divide the books of the Old Testament into two. The books that were written while the Israelites were still in their country. And then the books that were written after they went and had experienced the exile. And this is a later work. It is a book written after the exile. That is, Proverbs, I mean, some of the Proverbs are as old as the hills, but this part of Proverbs is an, is a later text. And all I, I, I can't tell you. I, I think it is a new idea. I don't think, I'm not saying that some writer introduced it. I think what's more likely is that it was a an awareness that was growing among people driven inevitably by a sensitivity to hearing the full personality of God, and not just, you know, the God is a king, God as a father, all the kind of masculine oriented elements. Anyway, that's my answer to your question, and it didn't answer it. So there.
Can I ask one more thing? Did this?
Yes.
Be, was this written after Moses had his first revelation and encounter with God?
Yes, that is part of the material, the oldest part of the Bible that happens long before this turning point where the people go into exile and they have to live in, in Babylon and, and they're introduced to the rest of the world, so to speak. This is, yeah, this is a, a new era, you might say.
Thank you.
All right, well Lynn, let's just go back to the text. Are you ready for Job? This is a beautiful poem in the middle of the book of Job. And I don't even want you to think about wisdom right now. I just want you to see if you can relax and enjoy this brilliant ancient poem. "Indeed, for silver there is a mine, just as there's a place where gold is filtered. Iron is taken from soil, and rocks pour out copper. The miner sets an edge to darkness, and to every outermost searches out the stones of the murk and death shadow." This is incredible poetry. So the writer is, is gonna start in this first stanza by describing a miner. "He, that is the miner, opens shafts where no traveler passes, places forgotten by feet. They hang, not another man in sight swaying, that is, the miners suspended by ropes under the ground, digging out seams of minerals. They hang, not another man in sight swaying." It, this is almost like some, a documentary about, you know, the amazing adventures of civilization in, from the ancient world. The earth, sure, bread comes from it, but underneath that, the earth rages like fire. I mean, what a beautiful insight that, yeah, we see the surface of the earth, and it's pretty impressive. Underneath it, there's a, there's a, there's a furnace. "The place for sapphires are its stones, and its dust is gold. This is a path no vulture knows, no falcon's eye ever perceived it. Where no sons of the pride, that is lions, ever treaded, on it no lion has ever prowled." We don't know exactly where the, these mines are, but they were probably in the Sinai Peninsula. Because we've discovered, archaeologists have discovered mines in this area. And they've even discovered prayers that the miners carved into the walls of the mines. Prayers that they might see the light of day again. And it's so interesting, because I'm from Kentucky, you know, and there's a lot of songs about coal miners. And I just feel this, the same humanity and, and energy, like these, these ancient miners underground, thinking, wow, it's dark as a dungeon down here. Will I ever get out? So verse 9, "The miner swings his arm at the cave wall. He chips away the roots of mountains. He splits channels into rocks, and his eye sees all manner of treasure. He dams the trickles of rivers and brings hidden things into the light." That's the first stanza, all about the miner, and now the poet brings it home. But wisdom, where can she be mined? And where is the place of understanding? You know, human beings have all this technical skill and all this engineering genius, and they can do these incredible things, and they can mine things, but where is the mind for wisdom? Where is the place of understanding? "No mortal knows her worth, and she cannot be found in the land of the living. The deep says, 'She's not in me,' and the sea says, 'She's not with me.'" Wisdom, it cannot be gotten for gold plate or weighed for its price in silver. It cannot be bought with ophirs, yellow gems, with precious carnelian or sapphire. We have a little list here of all these ancient jewels. Well, they, well, they're not ancient, they're still in our world, but it's one of the, the earliest catalogs of jewelry we have in literature. "Neither gold nor glassware can be compared to it, nor topaz jewelry exchanged for it. As for pearls or quartz, there's nothing to mention. For wisdom's purse is greater than coral." Ethiopia's chrysolite cannot be compared with it. With the purest yellow gems, wisdom cannot be bought. Well, now I should put a little, yeah. But wisdom, from where does she come and where is the place of understanding? She's hidden from the eyes of the living and to the birds in the sky, she's a secret. The lost them, which is a word there, they, it's the actual Hebrew is called abandon. A B A D D O N, an ancient word for the underworld. But it means this, the lost them and death say, with our ears, we heard a hint about her. I should put another line there, this like a new stanza. Well, God understands her ways and he knows her place. Indeed, he scans the edges of the earth. Everything under the sky he sees. And now he's talking about wisdom's role in creation. And I, in verses 25 through 27, I want you to see this, I think this is beautiful. I think this represents the ancient Jewish discovery of physics. Because here's where God needs wisdom in order to enact the weight of wind and set the emotion, the amount of water. When God enacted rules for rain and the lanes for the thunderbolt, that was when he saw and calculated wisdom. He fixed as well as figured wisdom out. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this down for a second. Okay? Stop, share. And I don't want to get too fancy. I mean, I can, I can talk about these things in a way that confuses myself. All right? But here's what I meant about physics and the role of wisdom. Because I really think we had, you know, we had geniuses back then, just like we have geniuses now. And this, 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 this presence called wisdom is basically the governing principles of life. So if you can imagine verse one, God creates the heaven, it says, God created the heavens and the earth. And now verse two, it's going to begin to tell the story. But if you can imagine with proverbs that the very, even before verse two in Genesis, God generates wisdom, a feminine force that controls the weight of wind. The rules for rain. The, in other words, physics, the general organizing principles of the universe. Now, I don't really know about this, but I think there's a word for this in Eastern religion and it's called the Tao. The idea that there is actually a, a, a deep organizing principle for life. And that you would be, um, and, and, you know, you'd be doing a good thing if you devoted your life to getting a sense for um, uh, this reality. For being attuned to this flow. Um, so again, I'm going to take, I'm going to pause for a second. Because those are the two big texts, Proverbs eight and Job 28 about wisdom in the Old Testament. But now I'm going to go back to the screen. And now we're really going to get weird because we're going to look at some books, some books in the Apocrypha. So the Apocrypha is a term used to describe certain books which are in Catholic bibles, such as Maccabees, you've heard the names of these. Tobit, Susanna, Judith. Um, th- there are about 15 books which are in Catholic bibles and also Orthodox bibles. That is like Greek Orthodox or Russian Orthodox or Syrian Orthodox bibles. But they're not in Protestant bibles or the Jewish Bible. The, uh, when Martin Luther, when the Reformation came, Protestants stopped including these books in their Bible. And now you may, you can buy a copy of the Bible, which includes these books in this middle section and it refers to it as the Apocrypha. But these are also ancient Jewish texts from the Old Testament period that again, are not in all bibles, they're not in the bibles we grew up with. So here is a text from Syrac, chapter 24. And here I explain, Syrac is the title of the book in the Apocrypha, the extra books in the Protestant and Jewish bibles, which are part of the Catholic and Orthodox bibles. Syrac is also known as Ben Syrac and Ecclesiasticus. It is written in Greek. And so here's what is, you can see that um, wisdom is becoming more and more a part of the, of their religion. Wisdom, and now it's Sophia, because this is written in Greek, not Hebrew. Sophia praises herself and tells of her glory in the midst of her people. Here's what she says. I came forth from the mouth of the most high and covered the earth like a mist. I dwelt in the highest heavens and my throne was in a pillar of cloud. Alone I compassed the vault of heaven and traversed the depths of the abyss. Over waves of the sea, over all the earth and over every people and nation I have held sway. Because she's the, the underlying organizing principles of all life. As I said before, the feminine aspect of God that unifies and beautifies all reality. Verse nine, before the ages, in the beginning, he created me and for all the ages I shall not cease to be. And then another text from the Apocrypha, which is called the Wisdom of Solomon. And it says, for Sophia, wisdom is a breath of the power of God. And a pure emanation of the glory of the Almighty. She is a reflection of eternal light, a spotless mirror of the working of God. Compared with the light, she is found to be superior. For the light is succeeded by the night, but against wisdom, evil does not prevail. And then again, from the wisdom of Solomon, with you, oh God, is Sophia. She who knows your works and was present when you made the world. Send her forth from the holy heavens, from the throne of your glory, send her. Well, so those are uh, some of these texts about wisdom, I think that's incredible. I mean, what? Let me offer an analogy. I think these texts are saying there is, well, again, it's hard to say, is wisdom equal to or the same as God? Or is wisdom seen as a a helper? A comforter? I think in many ways, we don't see wisdom personified li- like this in the New Testament. Because there's aspects of wisdom's personality that become fused with the idea of the Holy Spirit. And there's aspects of wisdom's personality in the New Testament that become, that become fused with Jesus. Because in John, chapter one, when he writes, in the beginning, and in proverbs, it says, in the beginning was wisdom. But he says, in the beginning was the word, was the logos. And it was with God and all things were created by the logos. So in the New Testament, um, the view, Jesus kind of encompasses this wisdom. The, and, and of course, I love everything about Jesus. But it is kind of a problem in that Jesus is masculine, a male human being as well as divine. So when wisdom kind of fades from view in New Testament religion, we don't have the same explicit connection to a part of God that is um, explicitly feminine, like Hokma, like wisdom slash Sophia. Um, now that hasn't, that doesn't stop me because now in my spiritual imagination. I don't necessarily pray to wisdom, although I could, I can. But I try to, um, uh, hear, uh, feel, feel her, feel her, uh, her presence, I guess you could say. Um, I've got some, let me look at my notes for a second because there's things I, I like to think about. I feel like this idea of wisdom in the Old Testament is that wisdom is, is the, the bonding agent in reality that holds and knits everything together. Um, yeah, um. Well, anyway, what do y'all want? We're, we're getting, uh, it's time to pause for a second. What do y'all think about any of this?
I, I guess one thing, I, I have the new revised standard edition. And so one of the things that was a little confusing to me is looking at the translation you were using. Um, you know, with, with the new revise. Um, and I just find it's because sometimes it, it really does read differently, at least the way I read it. So I just sort of found that interesting to me. For, for example, um, just the one that struck to me when you talk about this separation is wisdom part separated companion or whatever. In, in proverbs eight thirty, um, and if you put yours back up again, but you know, it's just interesting. Um, if, if you could put up.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'm just curious, it's just more out of curiosity because I was following it and I just, it was just interesting. Um.
So what does yours say?
Okay, it does say I was beside him. Okay, it, well, no, that was the, and you're right, okay, here, this is the difference. All right, it thirty starts, then I was beside him like a master worker, but this is the next phrase. And I was daily his delight. And I just, now, now the footnote down here in my Bible says, it looks like the Hebrew may lack his, but that's a big difference to me.
It is because in, you know, what the, this text you're looking at on the screen is my translation, right?
Gotcha.
And, um, if you insert his, then it, it um, marginalizes wisdom. She's no longer independently delighting herself.
Right.
She's the delight of, of, of God. And, you know, it's just so funny, it ain't there. And, um, you know, th- this, you know, these habits of um, thought are just so ingrained, you know? Um, it, you know, I didn't come up with this, this has been brewing and these ideas were introduced to me. And Carol mentioned a Bible study she was a part of where they talked about Sophia. But I think, you know, part of the um, the revelation of feminism is to like, stop looking at the world through patriarchal glasses. And there's times when we're, we're um, not even seeing what's there in these texts, we're assuming they're more patriarchal. Because the way I feel about it is, you know, God is not male, God is not female, God is beyond gender. And yet, we, we are very comfortable using masculine symbols and ideas for God and they kind of open the door into certain traits. Well, if that's the case, then we must also employ feminine symbols for God, or else we're going to miss out on uh, half of reality. Um, and so in this ca- you know, it, it, anyway, that's all I got to say. But see, again, doesn't make perfect sense, then at the end of Genet- you see, the interesting thing is, is it possible? It, these ideas are implicit in Genesis one, but just not said, because it says, let us make humanity in our image, male and female.
No, I think it's, I just found it interesting that if you don't have the ability to sort of go beyond that, just looking at how this is translated, I never would have. You know, it's, it's just interesting.
Yeah, it is, it is. It could be frustrating, but anyway, I, I have to depend on translations when I'm reading something other than the Bible. So we're all in this to some extent. Um, okay?
The view of wisdom looks a little different between the um, reading from Job and the reading from proverbs. I sort of get the impression in the Job reading that it's almost impossible to seek after wisdom. It's kind of deep, dark and mysterious and the opposite approach in proverbs where you're in mankind is encouraged to look after wisdom.
You're exactly right, Deborah.
Sorry?
No, you're exactly right, Deborah. And that's part of the difference between the book of proverbs and the book of Job. The book of proverbs says God has established all these incredible patterns in reality. And if you pay attention and keep your mouth shut and your eyes open, you might notice them and you might actually get into the groove.
Mm-hmm.
The book of Job says, eh, it's hard. Who, who can tell? You know, what do we know? We don't know anything. Uh, we can't figure it out. And of course, both statements have truth.
Yeah.
You know, the book of Job is a, is um, and, and the book of Ecclesiastes will say the same thing as Job. It will say, sure, God has patterns, but we don't ever have a clue as to what they are.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but you, you, th- these are part of the poles of the spiritual life, doubt and faith. And they're both important. Well, Jane, if you're the emcee now, you have to kind of come up with just some little comment. Well, Jane, if you're the emcee now, you have to kind of come up with just some little comment or question or, you know, little transitional piece of business.
Well, I liked your, um, bringing in the concept of the Tao to this. And connecting that to, to wisdom, um, the sort of overarching energetic. Whatever it is that we inhabit. As being something, something connected to the feminine and something that is kind of a universal, yeah, that, that really resonated.
Yeah, it's something that flows. It's something that spirals, it doesn't move in straight lines, it doesn't have hard edges. Uh, it, in, you know. And you have to kind of, uh, uh, roll with it, surf in it, with it, you know? Dance with it, waltz with it, these, these, um, this. Deep intuitive aspect of reality.
Because that's a big, that's a. Big other to the, to the, to the creation, I mean, the creation story is, you know, day one this, day two that, day three that. Well, wait a minute, you know, there's a lot more to this creation than just animals, vegetables, people. Sky, earth, plants, you know, there's something else that makes this real for us.
Yeah, and, and I like to think of it again as physics with a personality.
Yeah.
Not, not a kind of cold clinical physics. But physics as a living, almost breathing set of principles that you can never see. And never quite understand, but without them, everything would just collapse.
Right?
Yes.
When, when you think about, um, God within each of us. I think about wisdom as the part of God that can become part of humanity.
Yes. It is, it's a part of God that, that, um, isn't transcendent. Isn't on, isn't on top of, you know, not way out there.
Not there, right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't have to climb a mountain to find Hukma, you wouldn't, it wouldn't work anyway. Did any of you all grow up Catholic? Lou, I should have known with that name. Wisdom is not the same as Mary, okay? But. You know, when I look at the New Testament and Christianity and ask, where? Are there any analogous ideas to wisdom? And I often think about the Catholic view of Mary, Mary is not equal to God. But Mary is a, uh, indispensable avenue. To God. Mary is, um, a part of God that, um. Nurures. And, um. You know, that old saying about, there's a fellow who died and he got to the pearly gates. And Saint Peter met him and said, uh, he says, what, what are you here for? He says, I wanna come into heaven. And Saint Peter says, let me look at your record, and he looks at it and says, no way, buddy, you can't get in here. And then the fellow heard a voice, it's going. And he looked and it was Mary, and she says, here, come by the back door, I'll let you in. You know, an aspect of, of the divine. That isn't about rules and hard edges and, and. Anyway, I, 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 I do find some, some connections there, at least in the kind of spirit of it. It's a real shame, I think, that Protestants. Have felt they had to be so non-Catholic. That they kind of neglect the idea of Mary as a spiritual resource. I, sometimes I say, if only we'd heard as much about Mary's milk as Jesus's blood. Yeah.
Another thing that strikes me about these passages, the, um. The Proverbs passage and the Job passages is the amount of words in them. They are, they are long, they, they seem to say the same thing in multiple ways. The whole thing about the miners, um, is sort of building to this crescendo of, of, I, I mean, it's, it's. It's beautiful language, it's not. It, it's, it's not, it's, it's very, yeah, it's, it's a deeper kind of. Passageway into the imagery than you would get just from saying. Well, wisdom is this or not that, or, it's, it's really wonderful the way people thought and wrote. And. And created images for helping us get there, if you will.
I think that's really insightful, Jane, because the way I would. Put it then is. You know, if, we were talking earlier, someone mentioned Moses and Mount Sinai and the giving of the law. You know, that's not how, um. Hope, Hukma, wisdom is not introduced as thus says the Lord, Hukma is this and Hukma is that. She's introduced evocatively. Uh, poetically. Illusively, so there's still lots of, lots of space around the words. And, and, um, it's as if that's the, you can't, you can't explain Hukma in, in, um. Propositional kind of language. Yeah. Well, what do you think, team? I, I, I've gotten the habit of having a kind of prayer at the end. And tonight, and remember, our next meeting will be.
March nine.
Thank you. Here's, here's, um, some words from the final paragraph. Of the Book of Hebrews in the New Testament, okay? Let mutual love continue. Don't neglect to show hospitality to strangers. For by doing, some have entertained angels unawares. Keep your lives free from the love of money. And be content with what you have. For God has said, I'll never leave you or forsake you. So we can say with confidence, the Lord is my helper, I will not be afraid, what can anyone do to me? Isn't that a fantastic kind of saying at the end of Hebrews? Alright, I think we're done.
Well, thank you, Professor Mobley, this was really, really interesting. I, and thank everybody for coming this evening, this is great.
Yep, you're a blessing.
Next month.
Thank you.
Real blessing, real blessing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.